All right. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Town Council Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Uh, thanks, uh, Councilman, just, uh, calling that all the council is present except for Councilwoman Hartman. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Do we have any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Town Council Meeting?
So moved, second.
Favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three Special Town Meeting?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three informational work session? All in favor?
Aye.
Nice habit. Move now to a couple of special presentations, uh, start with a presentation from Grace Mary Brady honoring, uh, George Owens III.
Good evening, Town Council, and thank you for this opportunity to share Joyce, George's early childhood life. This is the home where George Owens was born. Uh, it's on Bay Avenue in North Beach, right to the right of what is today the Mead House. This is a picture of George's mother, Mary Mack Owens, George, and his brother Ensley making a snowman. This is a wonderful picture of George and his baby brother Ensley. And this is a photo of George Owens II, Mary Mack Owens, Ensley, and George Owens III, standing in front of that greenhouse in North Beach. This was our Beach Elementary School. This was the second school to serve the beach area. We're on Beach Elementary School number four right now. Uh, it is where currently the fire department is located. George went to school with Johnny Ward, Barbara Sherbert, Judy Leoni, Tommy Abner, that's Bobby's brother, Lenny Durnbar, Joy Morgul, Cecilia Bobner, Earl Sampson, Harold Finland, Sue Miller, and that's just to name a few. It's important to know the population in the beaches at that time because if you lived here, the summer would generate thousands and thousands of visitors, and during the winter, there were very few people. So if you look at these census records, George was born in nineteen forty-five. So it would be easy to say that we're probably only about two hundred and seventy-five people living in that area when he was born. What did George do and where did he go when he was growing up? This is Uncle Billy's Arcade, and this is what George would have seen during his childhood days. It's an empty lot now across from the current pier in the town of North Beach. Rose Haven is now Harrington Harbor with Catch Twenty-two. It was Rose Haven when George was growing up because we had an opportunity to swim at one of two pools, the one at the amusement park or the salt pool at Rose Haven at that time. Again, George is growing up. This is North Beach. This is Uncle Billy's Dancing, hamburger stand, seafood restaurant. It was just, and all of this was around the pier that exists in North Beach today. Now we're in Chesapeake Beach visiting Stenness. Uh, these are the early days on the left, later days on the right. Stenness was everybody's hometown restaurant. They had a family table inside the restaurant, and everybody just came in, and there'd be no less than eight or ten people discussing the politics of the day, the weather of the day, and anything that was going on inside a Stenness restaurant. Where else did George go when he was growing up? Sherbert's was one of his favorite places because, remember, he went to school with Mrs. Sherbert's daughter. Uh, it was the gas station that was on the corner of Second and Chesapeake. Today, there's the fast stop there. And Ma Brown's on your right. The senior housing is there today. That is on the corner of Chesapeake and Third. George loved to drink and to smoke, so he would go, he could walk to either one of these places and get his cigarettes and get a couple beers to have with his friends. Uncle Billy's complex. You have to realize how much fun it was to grow up in this area. They had bingo, skeet shooting, everything that you could imagine that they would have in any kind of arcade. And I was just sharing with one of the council members, back in that time, they actually used real guns. It was not BB guns. It was real guns at the arcade. One of George's favorite places was Mama Frenchie's. I don't know who was a bigger character in Mama Frenchie's, George or Marie, who worked there most of her life. If you didn't have an opportunity to go to Frenchie's, there were four tables inside, an Annabelle Lee pinball machine, an old Chianti bottle. As they drank them, they put candles in them and let it all melt down the side. It was just a fabulous place to go, and people drove from Washington, DC and Virginia to come to Frenchie's. One of the saddest nights in the town was when a tractor trailer went into Frenchie's. All of the beaches, Chesapeake Beach and North Beach, were standing in the road, just literally devastated that their restaurant had been crashed into. The Union Church. I have a picture here of former Commissioner Barbara Stenness, Claire May Buckmaster. George took Claire May to church every Sunday when she was older and could no longer drive. And I thought you would particularly enjoy the picture of Union Church because it's an older picture, and actually, that's what it would have looked like in the forties and fifties when he attended. The amusement park, we're over in Chesapeake Beach right now. The Beach Comer, all the guys loved to hang out at the Beach Comer. There were so many fun things to do in there, or ride the merry-go-round. One of George's favorite things to do was stand on the high dive board at the pool and make sure everybody was watching before he would do his dive. He just, uh, he really was just such an unusual character, and everyone just absolutely loved him. He was a lot of fun. Now, the G family is still around, but Billy G and George were lifetime friends, and Billy G would dress up as Davy Crockett, Daniel Boone, Native American Indian, and he worked at the amusement park entertaining the kids for years and years and years. He had a house on the corner of Ninth Street and Bag. George loved to play baseball. All of the Beach Boys really did like to play ball. And this picture, George's father is the coach, and George is the fifth boy in this middle row on the right-hand side. And this is a picture of them winning a championship in nineteen sixty. This is a baseball field that my brothers and everyone played ball on. What you're seeing now is a very, um, the one building is Chuck's Carryout. I don't have a pointer. To the right of that is the Seabreeze. So Chuck's Carryout is no longer there. That's a fast stop. The Seabreeze is now Traders. And to the left of Chuck's Carryout, all of that is your water park now. The towns love the parades. I've got no less than seven gorgeous pictures of just Chesapeake Beach participating in the parades. The Business Association, the Quanis, the Optimists, the Masons. This particular parade picture I chose because George's mother is on this float, and at that time, that's my grandfather standing in the back to the right because he was mayor of North Beach at that time. I put that up because George started going to parades when he was at least seven or eight years old. And this is a particular picture that he was very proud of, that the family shared. Uh, and this is George at the Charlotte Hall Veterans Center Parade, uh, and this was just recent. This was in two thousand and twenty. George gets out of school. Uh, he and Joy Morgul were voted the class clowns, of which they were both very, very proud. So he went from being, um, you know, charming, fun-loving George to going to the Vietnam War. So this is a picture of George and the Vietnam War. He had so many medals, you could have a talk on just the medals he received. But he served from sixty-four to sixty-eight, uh, and had the rank of sergeant. This is one of George's friends in Vietnam. His name is Bob. George returns from Vietnam to the beaches. I didn't have a picture to show, but he and his mother had a mortgage company right where the light is in Chesapeake Beach. The Veterans Park is there now, but there was a little house on that corner, and that was his very first business. It was a mortgage company. The second business, Chaney's, had had a very long dynasty of more than forty years of being owned and was put up for sale. So George got together with some of his friends, Dick Hogan, Martin Dennis, and Norman Sawyer. They purchased Chaney's, and George went into the restaurant business. This is just some tidbits. George's father was also in the House of Delegates, representing Calver County from nineteen thirty-nine to nineteen forty-three. He was a journal from forty-five, chief journal in fifty-five, mayor in North Beach from sixty to sixty-two. He volunteered to join the Army while he was a state legislature, and he served as an officer during World War Two. George Owens III followed his father's footsteps when he was appointed to serve in the House of Delegates in nineteen eighty-eight. George was a wonderful friend to anyone who needed help in the community or in the entire state. So for purposes of keeping it under ten minutes, I chose Hurricane Isabel because both towns, Chesapeake Beach and North Beach, elected officials responded to help. But you can see the damage on the waterfront there. Uh, there's George in the second photo talking with Senator Barbara McCaulsky. All of the town officials, both Chesapeake Beach and North Beach, were there. The senators, the delegates, um, overhead helicopters flying around so that they could put everything that happened on the news. But everyone always came out to help. The lady that's to the left in this folder, this was Mary Sullivan, and like so many that day, they lost everything. Uh, she was handicapped and, uh, could not get out of her house. The neighbors helped her get out. She had no home to return to, but when George came up to her and told her everything would be okay, he would take care of it. She was fine. She knew it would be. Here's some more of Hurricane Isabel with George going into one of the guys that he knew to check out what happened to the inside of their house. And here's another Hurricane Isabel that I thought was interesting because the picture to the right is Ninth Street. So the water had come all the way up to Dayton. This is at Ninth and Dayton, looking towards Chesapeake Beach to get that picture. George belonged to everything, and my mother, you have to understand, my mother was born in nineteen thirty-five. George was born in forty-five. She was his babysitter. It was a very small town at that time, and everyone knew everyone. So she had to talk George into joining the, being a director of the Bayside History Museum, and he got to work with all the ladies that he loved so much. Mildred Finland, Ethel Lou Bennett, Barbara Stenness, Claire May Buckmaster, Vicki Trago, everything. And one of our exhibits in the Bayside History Museum on the second floor is Scouts. And only George, who was always very well-turned-out, he had spats. None of the other Boy Scouts had spats, but George had to wear spats with his Boy Scout uniform. And we have that original uniform upstairs in the museum, dedicated to him, of course. He was very proud of the museum because he loved the beaches so much. And that's a picture of my mother to the left, George in the middle, and I'm to the right. My mother and George argued weekly. It was a sport. They loved it. When George passed, I put a post on Facebook. I could hear them arguing in heaven, you know? So, but they were best friends their whole life, and it's just kinda nice when they do all these things together and join a lot of organizations together. So here we're in Chesapeake Beach, and this is George with some of his buddies. So there's Gerald, Pat Bueller, former Commissioner, Jim Lightheiser, Hagner Reed, Mr. George Owens. And this picture was taken in two thousand and eighteen, inside the Rod and Reel. The next picture was a dedication of the, uh, Mark Fraser Garden. And, um, George is sitting in between my mother's head and Senator Miller's head, but I chose this picture because my mother's a beach girl. To the right of Mike Miller is Pat Nutter. And Pat Nutter has done so much for this community, and he's always been one of the Beach Boys also, along with Bobby Abner, that you all honored this week with what you broadcasted and sent out for him. So, and he loved Bruce Wall because he always wore the Vietnam hat. So I had to put that in there. This is George with, uh, former Governor Larry Hogan. Clint Eastwood came to North Beach and Chesapeake Beach. Well, George could not miss out on this. He was there the whole time. He came to the beach, um, for you, those of you that don't know, my parents owned Camp Roosevelt. I still live there. My brother still lives there. And he came to Camp Roosevelt to do a movie. So George, of course, had to come down and make sure that he was in the movie and was making sure everyone was doing everything that they were supposed to do. So I had to put this in here because he was so funny that day. You can just, you'd have to hear him. All these organizations that he's belonged to, that's only in the beaches, and it only names a few. He was involved in everything in the whole state of Maryland. I'm not even talking about all of the veterans, uh, things that he did and organizations that he supported. But I wanted to mention the last one at the bottom on the right because it's my segue to the last two pictures of the slide. George was very proud on being a son of the American Revolution. And his greatest legacy, he would be the first one to tell you, he was really proud of his son. He loved his family. He loved his son. So in closing, I wanted to add a couple pictures of his family because that's what he was most proud of. So there's a picture of George with his grandson, George number fourth, and George's brother Ensley. The last picture is George again in the back, and then we have Emerson and George, I'm sorry, Jackson's on the left, and then we have George, his son, and Emerson on the right. And in ending, I just say thank you very much, George Owens, on behalf of all the beaches.
That was, uh, that was really remarkable. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have some follow-up questions about some of those pictures. That, that was just fantastic. No, no, that's for, uh, we'll, we'll take that offline. Thank you. All right. Uh, next, uh, we're going to have a special presentation, uh, from Public Works on the Infrastructure Improvement Project. Uh, we're getting an update here from Jay on the saddle repairs and other improvements. Over to you, sir.
Got you. Thank you. So I'm gonna read from a script because I want to make sure I get this right. I do think it's important to share with the public and the council and the mayor, you know, because this project is over and what we started at, where we're at, and some things I think are important along the way. So we're gonna start off with the six Ps. And I wasn't gonna put the six Ps in here because some people know a different saying, but in this case, um, it's going to be prior proper planning prevents poor performance. And I wanted to highlight the six Ps because without preparation for infrastructure improvements, we become reactive at Public Works and increase level of emergencies. And this reactiveness decreases our performance. Emergencies increase the chances that we are working in an unsafe condition, that we have increased debt to the town, both indirect and indirect costs, and most importantly, an increased time of response and delays for, uh, citizens. This project was very involved. I'm gonna move on to the next slide because I'm tired of looking at myself. Give you something else to look at. Um, this project was very involved, and it proves the importance of prior proper planning. When we prepare for infrastructure improvements and they are funded by decisions of the council, we can focus our attention on emergencies we cannot avoid. When we are operating critical infrastructure, there will always be a chance of failure. But where, when you are consumed by emergencies that can be prevented, our performance decreases. Another benefit of the preparation is that we can effectively notify citizens of our work. This project required a lot of coordination between Public Works, contractors, suppliers. In addition, we work to ensure that the project impacts and the reasons for the project were communicated with the residents. This was done every day. There were changes to planned shut-offs when saddles failed, so this communication was critical. We have come a long way in how effectively we provide public notifications, and I wanted to thank Holly Wall, our town administrator, for that. I know she wouldn't want me to do that. We really have come a long way, and it's very helpful for us in the field when we have changes that I can make, uh, one call and get right back to the emergency and not worry about notifications. So that, I didn't want that to go unmentioned. Um, I also want to thank the citizens for their, uh, patience during these changes. As some of the scheduled shut-offs, we tried to do them after morning hours around nine o'clock every day, and sometimes something broke before then. We had unplanned shut-offs, and they were patient and they understood. Uh, when, when citizens sign up for the e-blast and read the town notifications, they are informed, and we can update at a moment's notice. I only have three pages. Bear with me. Uh, by notifying the residents, we are safer as they look out for crews working in the area. They are also provided an accurate update information. And I think that's important because when citizens understand the project, not just someone's in the street. If they're informed, they know what's going on, how we're doing, thing, I find that important, and we're able to do that much better than we ever have. Um, advance the slide. Oh, I already advanced it, so I'll go back to this one. Um, I want to thank this council and mayor, and I wish the mayor were here, I'm sure he'll get it, for always keeping the town's infrastructure a number-one priority. And I don't take that for granted as an employee and a citizen. Um, you know, that means a lot. I think it's, it's beneficial to come here and have the ability to relay issues and have them taken seriously and prioritized. So I appreciate that. Um, I feel like when I, when I come to council meetings or staff work sessions, or even our work sessions, if I have a problem and I bring it here with a plan, we've always made it, or, you know, implemented, found a way to make it happen once we understood it was for the greater good. And, and that benefits not only us as citizens, but, but the public and everyone in this, in this whole town because whether you're on water or sewer or not, everyone's paying, um, for town infrastructure. Why is this project important? Um, we all know that saying, an ounce of profession is worth a pound of cure. That same thought speaks of the proactive versus reactive. When you can schedule, plan, and prepare to fix any part of an underground water system before it breaks, it will always be a safer condition for Public Works and contractors. Most water main failures occur when the system has the lowest demand because that is when it is at its highest pressure. Here in town, the lowest demand is from two AM to five AM. And that three-hour window counts for seventy-five percent of our breaks. So after a break, crews are normally called, you know, early hours of the morning, woken up by emergency recall, respond to an unknown situation in the dark, in the road. You know, our first thing is turn off the water, and then we start mobilizing to make repairs. There are many safety factors I could list that show the difference between proactive and reactive, but here are the two biggest in my opinion. Number one, when you're proactive, staff can work planned, normal hours, and during daylight. And, and that alone is the biggest increase to safety measures. Number two, when you fix it before it breaks, the material below the road is dry and much safer to work around than when it's soaked, saturated, and caving in. You know, even when there's a trench box in place or other issues that, when you have, it's like quicksand material, um, there's a risk. So proactive, there's no sinkhole, nothing else. This is a breakdown of it. When you know something is going to fail, it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when. It will always save time and money to address the failure before it happens. In this case, the time is truly hard to quantify. Um, but the money is around one point nine millions doing this work proactively versus reactively, and, and it was work that was going to be done no matter what. So, you know, that, that saves a lot of money for everyone. We started in areas of town, um, that we were experiencing the most water main breaks, and, and that was Richfield Station. And it's not in the very newer sections, it's not in the latest sections. It was kind of a time period and frame in the late nineties, uh, early two thousands that had some infrastructure issues. So where we're experiencing the most water main breaks, sometimes three a month, um, is where we started. And we concentrated those areas that had the biggest lateral feed lines, which were the townhouse sections. Townhouses are fed with an inch-and-a-half line, inch-and-a-half saddle because they have fire suppression. So although there were other areas, single-family homes within these zones, our biggest liability was these inch-and-a-half breaks, and that's what we focused this project on. Um, not only did it create more of a damage to the road, but more people are out of service when townhouse section is out. So with this project, we're eliminate our biggest liability, and that's where we started. I'll go through a couple slides and listen. So we've all seen on the news when there's a large water main break and a giant sinkhole appears in the road. This creates a major safety concern and major traffic problems. There are two main factors that cause such damage. Obviously, the size of the line that fails is a big factor, but the other is often the response time in getting the line isolated and shut off that causes the most damage. In other words, the longer the leak, the worse the sinkhole becomes in the liability and the repair. Here in town, we have staff to respond during and after hours. Our average response time is minutes, not hours, to get the water break isolated and shut down. And I'll move to the next picture, but in this picture, you can obviously see how much the road heaves up from the water pressure underneath it versus the curb that didn't move. Here's another picture. Um, so our response time getting there keeps it, keeps the damage and mitigates it, but the power of the water, uh, after the break is, creates a substantial cost differential because in this area, this particular road failure was a hundred feet away from the initial break, and the initial break was a sinkhole. So I wanted to demonstrate and show that, you know, being proactive is a not only safer approach, but it's a less because of everything that happens. In this case, a two-inch lateral broke, and all that material was under the road before that failed. Gives you the scope and the power of water. In Richfield Station, this is a view of a typical saddle, and it's iron and it's grade-eight steel. There's a few factors, um, in There's a few factors, um, in Richfield that aren't in other areas of the, of town because of the soils, but there's also other areas, Bayview Hills, that are similar soils. As we all know, we live on kind of the bottom of the ocean. There's a lot of diatomaceous soil once you dig so deep in town. So, um, these leaking saddles weren't leaking when, insulation, but I'm not sure how long they've been leaking. Um, we were digging and scheduled shut offs, so if we'd get close to one, before we even got to it, it would fail. That's when we had unplanned shut off. So some of these saddles were leaking underground and didn't show their face at a complete failure. One of the things I found interesting when we completed this project, I was going through some notes, was in 2012, a little over 10 years ago, we produced out of our towers 180,494,000 gallons. Uh, since that date, just, you know, 10 years ago, we've built the rest of Chesapeake Village, 75% of it, and the entire neighborhood of the heritage. Even with these new demands on the water system, last year, we produced 1 million, or 161,310,000 gallons. So we actually produce 18,000, 18 million gallons less now than we did 10 years ago without these new developments, and that's a direct result of going in and fixing leaks. Not just this ARPA project, but leaks that showed up before. And I find that very notable, because there's very few towns or water systems that can say they've decreased their usage over the last 10 years. And obviously, that's a direct savings to all of our citizens. This is an example of, uh, three saddles and a townhouse section. So this one obviously feeds, get this laser to work. This one obviously feeds a townhouse that was over here, this one over here. The notable part about this is, this is the third one. When we dug it out, came back two minutes later, realized it, it was leaking at that amount for about two minutes, filled up about 20 gallons in this area. So that, that saddle had been leaking for who knows how long, found their way out. It's one of the ones that we had to shut down once it was at that point. Normally, what we would do every day to try to, uh, expedite it was dig out nine, nine services, steel plate them overnight. This is a picture after the trench box is gone. Steel plate it, come in the morning, shut off the water from 9 to about 1, and go through and replace all of these saddles. This is a piece of infrastructure that failed, um, that was not a saddle. And if you look right here, it's from electrolysis. So I've saved many parts of our system for later diagnostic and to understand this phenomenon. I've, I've mentioned before that we're not 100% sure of everything that's happening out there. We've mitigated a lot of it, but there is no one smoking gun that's causing this infrastructure failure. This is just a picture of a, some of the things we saved. These are pretty common. Um, nothing unique. The saddles failed, same iron saddles. So the thing notable about this, this area, this era, uh, late 90s to the early 2000s, I feel part of this factor is there was a, uh, inferior cast iron industry for a while, and these were cast saddles. And some of the metals, I think, contributed to this premature failure, because like I said, earlier in that development, different saddles have outlasted these, which are later. Um, that's a contributing factor. So what we've done is replaced it with, uh, more expensive, but not that much expensive compared to the cost of this project, stainless steel saddle. These are run about $230, where an iron saddle's about 130. So with a hundred dollar difference, you're getting 100-year life out of this equipment, and we're, we're taking over. Uh, one of the good things, lessons learned from experience with this before the ARPA project, was in our latest developments, the end of Chesapeake Village and the entire heritage, we mandated this product and also, uh, HDPE lines. So we won't experience that, hopefully, ever. Just a lesson learned thing. This is just a new saddle with, uh, we put seven pounds of anodes. We found them being effective. Um, there's, there's different theories. I've had BG&E out here, I've had Comcast out here, I've had another firm, and I actually have another firm coming next month when we do a scheduled saddle change out. So there's the phenomenon of underground stray current from underground BG&E, which we did eliminate in two areas, but we still had current when the power was off. There's actually static electricity created by water going through a plastic pipe, like when you used to rub your balloon on your, on your head and stick it to the wall. So there's a lot of factors that we can't control. We also can't address it globally, like they would do in other jurisdictions where there's ductile iron, and they would put in anode banks about every quarter mile, because the current travels. We have to address each lateral individually, because as you can see, metal goes into plastic nowhere else for that current to go. This is just another piece of an infrastructure. Um, that was a blow off on green leaf that never existed until we were able to do this project and discover it was buried. We were actually, uh, had discovered there were five blow offs in town that were on a plan, not an ass build, it was just a plan for Richfield, that we were never able to locate, weren't sure they were there. They were installed, so somewhere between the contractor installing the water system and the house builder paving the road, they were completely covered up. This is us putting, we found them at, sorry, we found them at this elevation, and we put risers on them. So now five of these are functional, they work, we've rebuilt them. This is just a picture of a typical day, the tools, the saddles, the brass fittings, the anodes, and everything we did to bury it. This picture demonstrates, um, how much more proactive approach is surgical and very small holes controlled, where this were, you know, on this street, just on my side of the picture, where I was standing when I took it, there's an area about this big from one blowout. There's a patch where I'm standing on was one of the three saddles that were not on this project, because we had already changed them. But it just demonstrates how a proactive approach is much more cost-effective. 90% of the material that's back in those holes came out of those holes versus a, a complete failure, where all of the materials hauled out because it's a compromise. So the other thing I want to thank Holly, I sent her a bunch of information and pictures, and she made this beautiful slideshow for me. So I appreciate that. It was more entertaining that way. But, but the reason I wanted to really speak to this is, it's a big project, it was a lot of money, but I feel like the town and the citizens got the bang for the buck. Uh, we worked with Taylor Industries, I want to throw a shout out to them. They were very safe. There, I anticipated two to three saddles a day on their average day, they got five. Uh, so they were able to not only cover the, my biggest concerns in Richfield Station with that amount of money, we went from there to Dolores Court in Bayview Hills, which have two-inch feeds to their townhouses, and were able to replace everyone on the same project. So I, I wanted to, uh, you know, tell, tell you where we're at, emphasize the importance of investing in infrastructure, which we do, I want to make sure we keep that going, and also be real in the fact that there are going to be other areas in Richfield Station that we're going to address. We're always going to have failures, but we are at a point where we can breathe. We can, we're, we're ready to respond to an emergency once in a while. It, it was inundating us. Um, so we got over the biggest hurdle. In the future, could we plan a, a section of Richfield somewhere that we find is proactively to go in there and do it? We'll find out, because if a break occurs, my plan is already to address that, but proactively dig up the next one and just compare it as an isolated incident. Are we in the same boat that we were for this? We'll find that out as we move forward. So if it's all right with the chair, Mayor Fink, I'll, I'll take any questions.
I thank you for, uh, that's a really thorough report.
Thank you.
Given the, given the importance of this project, let's just take a, a moment to give the council a chance, I think, to respond or ask questions if, if that's okay. So I'm just gonna start with Councilman Partik.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
I think, and wonderful, almost $2 million in savings that you have saved the town and the residents with this project, and I think that's the way, um, we should all be trying to work, right? Proactively, trying to figure out what we can do to head off problems rather than respond, you know, to them. So I don't have any questions, just appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was excellent presentation. In fact, it was so good, maybe we could consider loaning Jay to other municipalities to give seminars on some of this stuff. Really, uh, the detail and the level of explanation with some of the parts and the processes for any of the residents listening. Um, these type of presentations help us to understand just how effective our Public Works Department is, and we know they couldn't be as effective as they are without support from Town Hall. Um, I want to underscore effective communications. I live in a Richfield Station. Um, we know that citizen miss and disinformation and spread like wildfire and get people, and then, and you see the scuttlebutt and things, but I, uh, we've come a long way in seven years, uh, well, seven years ago. Um, the, the communication, um, maybe is about as effective as it could be. Um, and the information that, uh, letting Richfield Station's citizens affected know, you know, it's uncomfortable, um, and it can be a little inconveniencing, but in the long run, so many inconveniences are avoided. That's part of the payback from the investment with this. You talked about money, um, that the investment saves time and money. Uh, but peripherally, it, it improves the quality of life for residents and, and in Public Works as well. But Jay, they don't have so many late night in these emergencies. I think that we should underscore that. Um, Bravo, and I appreciate the hard work. We really do, and, uh, I'm sure that the residents really, everyone here at Town Hall, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, thanks, Jay. Good presentation. Um, during my career, preventive maintenance was always a key part of trying to stay ahead of a problem, and you've done an outstanding job. And Holly, thank you for all your support for our Jay and our entire Public Works staff. So keep up the good work, guys. I know you're faced by the challenge of our soil characteristics here, so keep at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jay, I'm gonna have a few questions and a few observations. One is an observation. I think the reason why this project was so darn successful is simple, and that is, it was show and tell and explain. So you started this long ago by showing us a problem, telling us about the problem, and explaining the problem. And I think that was step one. Step two is that the administration, Town Council, and the mayor paid for it. And the third is what you just did, which is sometimes we have projects and we don't know what the end game is, you know, like, how did it actually turn out? You just showed us how it turned out, and you even gave us a cost savings to that. So why was it successful? Show, tell, explain, fund properly, and then actually follow through and follow up and close the loop by telling us how it turned out. And that's why it was successful, in my opinion. Um, that's an observation. Um, well done. Um, so if I'm to understand, I'll, I asked you a question back in the back when I first got here, and that is, is the saddle replacement complete? And I think you answered it, but would you expand upon that?
Sure. And I appreciate the, the question. So we, I knew of certain areas of Public Works that were, when, when one broke, Deerfield was one on Deer Chase where we started this project. We knew within the next month, the next one would break, and we kind of geared up. Our equipment was like the fire department. We backed in our emergency response trailer. We left our backhoe on the thing. We were ready to go because it was inundating us. So I had in my mind, you know, we, we kind of got, let's say, ARPA money, and it was asked of us, what can we do with that? That was, let's mitigate this problem. There was an area that I knew of that was captured in this project 100%. We even were able to capture some other areas as we went investigated. Yes, needed to be done, needed to be done, including Bayview Hills. Where we left off was kind of the era where Richfield Development left off around 2010, hasn't been much since there. Those areas have yet, we haven't had global issues. Could that be down the road? Possibly. They're not using these iron saddles, but as we go in, I will investigate. Could I come back one day and say, hey, I think it's cost-effective to, let's change out these two streets because of X, Y, and Z? Yes. And also later, maybe there'll be different technologies where you don't have to go to each metal line to protect it, uh, with catheters and whatever you want to protect it with. That's out there, because this is not a unique to Chesapeake Beach problem. And I've actually sat and talked to quite a few people, some representatives for WSSC. So did we get everything if I had another $750,000? Could I spend it? Yes, I could. Is that money as well spent as this? I don't know, because I don't know in these areas yet where we're going to be. If that, I don't know if that answers it or not, but, um, continual investment. The next thing may be something different, but just the continual investment, being aware of it, and have people that can bring to the council these problems as we move forward, because, you know, all of our infrastructure is getting older every day. And, and, you know, we came online late 80s, 90s with water. We're, we're going to be pushing 50-year-old in-the-ground infrastructure here before long. So continual investment, one way or the other, I think is going to keep us where we're at, and we're in a good spot.
I think, um, that was a really good answer and really, like, pragmatic, you know? So it's not done, but it's in a much better place. And as we also discussed earlier in the back, it's kind of like the highway user funds. So much money from highway user funds. We create a priority list, and we pave until we've run through that bank account, if you will, that line item. Um, why does this not occur in older parts of town?
So I think there's two, two reasonings that I've been pushing, and what I've done a lot of due diligence in finding that maybe they're not factual. One is, it occurs where we have underground power. Most of our older parts of town have overhead power. So that's my logic in stray current. Although we were able to come offline at the, um, captain's quarters, two places in Richfield, we killed power everywhere, gave out notice and did it, and we still had stray current in those lines. We even unhooked grounds from townhouses, thinking maybe they have capacitors, they have batteries that are backfeeding, and we still have current in the ground. There's a theory that acidic soil versus alkaline soil, the metal goes through both, you're creating a battery. So there's no really way around what we've got, um, without going out and ripping out everything all the way up to the house, which is an impossible project. I don't know if I'm making more questions, or if I'm answering the questions you got.
No, no, but, um, and then I, I think I'll close with this one thought, if you will. And that is, you know, I already explained why I think this project was successful. And I think that might perhaps get to the root of what Councilman Moore has asked a few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, about a capital planning, you know, capital budget, capital projects. Even if they may not happen, what, you know, what is the long-term goal? Because it's not just with Public Works that I think this pertains to. It pertains to all of our budgeting, if you will. And that is, yes, we can have the budgets that we received with the capital, you know, potential capital projects, but there's so much more. Because one thing I've noticed in 20 years of public service is that it's really cool and sexy to build something, it's not sexy to maintain it. And so I think sometimes we need to kind of have that long-term reign, you know, vision. And sometimes, as a public servant, I feel like I fall down on that a little bit. So I think this is a really good example of, like, long-term planning, you know, and how it happened. Problem was explained, was funded, and it was completed, and we were told about it, and I think that is a wonderful thing. And I'll close with that. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, and I'll.
I'll just throw in one more comment, because this is probably the longest report I've done in five years. So after this month, I'm back to my half-page report. So y'all appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, I'll just wrap, say, most of my questions have already been answered. I echo the, you know, the work. I remember sitting with you in your, um, office, uh, out there, looking at that whole computer mockup that you had that was showing where the failures were. I don't know if you remember that. It's very interesting.
I do remember that.
Um, I just have one quick question that I didn't understand, which was the reduction in water production. Is that because saddles were leaking?
That's because saddles were leaking. I think we had, um, in the, and the only reason I know, that's when I took over as a superintendent, so all the sheets I do semi-annual report when I filed last year, is I pulled out the first one we did, which was 2012. And, um, so a lot of it was a reduction in, uh, leaks that we didn't know, some we did know, metering everything that was accountable for in town, like some irrigation systems, some other things, but most of it, and I'm sure there are some people that are more conservative with water than they were 10 years ago, that's part of it, but it's not all of it. I think over half of it is due to leaks. The one blow off that we found we didn't know exists leaked from installation. I did some math on it in my head, and it was probably a little over a gallon every two minutes. And you And you do that for years, it adds up. So I will, I didn't read that, but I am going to do another audit. I did one in 2018 versus our production and billing. Shows us the standard is around 10% the difference, most municipal governments. We were at like 9%. But I'm going to do one at the final of this year and verse it to billing. And I think will be a lot less and it'll give us an explanation of what we resolved with the saddle project.
That's fantastic. I'm just, I just want to wrap up with the notion that there's also an environmental benefit. So add that to the, add that to the list of positives. Councilman?
Yeah, so when you do that audit, that would take into the account the wastewater treatment plant leak, right? And so that will also like, depending on when you do it and when that leak's fixed, lower that that usage, I would, obviously.
It would, but it, so that even though it's a leak, it's still metered and accounted for. So it might not show up like un-metered water. You know what I mean?
All right, thank you, Jay. We will move now to the Town Administrator's Report. We've all read Holly's report. Open for questions. I'll start with Councilwoman Bodine. I'm sorry, Holly's going to
I just want to make one, one announcement. Some really good news on our public work staff. Dennis Berger obtaining his water license, class two distribution. He's worked very hard to obtain this licensure and he did this week. Jay, did you want to give any summary on how difficult the license is to obtain?
I do. And first of all, I want to say how Dennis has been here five years, just here recently. He's very team player, very good employee. His main hire was because he's a great mechanic, services all of our equipment. And he's capable of doing all the work we do at our water tower. He did sit and didn't pass the test the first time. He phoned up, studied it and passed it. Only about one of four people pass that test. And that's even after a week of class trying to take it. Here in town, we draw water from the aquifer and we're not dealing with biologics and different parasites because we don't have source water, river water. But to pass the test, you have to be able to qualify to treat all waters of the state. So it's a lot of chemistry and a lot of pathogens you have to know to pass the test. So I'm very proud of Dennis and want to mention that. He's dedicated, he did it. And he's been working under our license. So when we used to have one, now we have DJ has two and Dennis will be the third for the distribution side. Gives the town more redundancy and next man up kind of theory of something happens. So that's good for everyone.
Congratulations, Dennis. Anything else to add, Holly? Councilwoman?
Congratulate him. I mean, that's quite an accomplishment. That's really cool. I guess my first question will be, let's just follow up on that. And so how does that license sort of tie into the Public Works Water Tower Maintenance Contract? I mean, I assume that's still needed, right? Even if we have these licensed individuals in town?
Yes, correct. So your licensed individuals are maintaining your water system. The maintenance contract is the exterior of the actual water tower facility.
Okay, I just wanted to have I'm just going through the report, looking for my notes. On the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to be talking about the leak later on. So that's the one thing that I had on the wastewater treatment plant. And that report's quite similar to what was in last month. So I really have no other questions. There seems to be nothing. Everything's explained.
Just questions on several updates on the Aquatics Park says RFP, RFQ in the coming weeks. Any idea of a schedule?
Yes, so Wayne and I are working on this full scope of work. We originally had thought we would do just an RFQ, but we are now combining that with an RFP as well. So we are finalizing that and we hope to have that out in the coming weeks.
That should accelerate the overall selection process. And then the annual fireworks display, did we issue the RFP? The date was yesterday.
Yeah, I'm actually just wrapping it up, so it should go out first thing tomorrow morning.
Energy audit. When we receive that, can we get a look at that? Thank you. And then I guess for Jay, any update on the Mears Wet Well issue?
Yesterday?
Yeah.
Sure, is it time to share? Sure. So we did, we did have a failure on the dry vault side of the pit. And we weren't sure what it was until we pumped down. We actually had a citizen around 10:00 AM approach one of our staff that was walking down the bridge and said, hey, I see water coming out of the lid at Mears Avenue. It was actually Dennis. So he responded on the way there, calling us. And I showed up there once we realized it was not the actual wet well overflowing. It was the dry vault. We shut the pumps off to mitigate and stop the spill. It did stay basically contained within the compound because it's concrete walls and it's downhill. But some of it did go out onto the curb and down through a grass area and into like a B ditch. I estimated that at under 100 gallons because the only area that was elevated above this vault was a two-foot extension anticipating rise and did some math and
Any idea of the cause?
So we pump out the pit, we get the pumper trucks there. A check valve had failed just past the gasket. It didn't break, it pulled out the gasket itself. So it was a leak. That thing was built and finished in 2008, it's been like that since then. I think that check valve internally failed, creating some hammer that made a component fail. Haven't deciphered that yet because we're going to tear that check valve out tomorrow, but it's mitigated.
All right, thank you. Other questions on the reclamation treatment plant on the, I'm so pleased to see the effort underway on solar panels. Just to comment, though, I think it's admirable that we're looking at the entire plant, but anything we can do to offset some of the power consumption with solar panels, I think would be worthwhile. So let's not, if we can't do the whole plant, let's not give up on it. And then on code enforcement, I raise this question every once in a while. When I look through this report, I see a couple of these that are very old. One goes back to May of 18 and the other goes back to November of 19. Can we look into trying to close those out at some point?
Some of them are actually involved in court. So unfortunately, some of the processes
I see. Okay, well, hang in there. And then final question on the Holiday Lights Tour, any idea when we're going to start signing up for that?
Within the next week.
But that's all I have. Thank you.
Holiday Lights Tour, is it, they're going to be E-Blast for signup for that?
Yes, we will have a registry for proceeds.
Try to get on the bus this year. I don't have any additional questions. Thanks to Holly, doing a great job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So just to follow up on the energy audit, do we, do we have a approximate date?
You know, I have followed up a couple of times. I think that multiple different master students have been working on it and there's been a little turnover. But the Finance Center has assured me within the last week that right away. So I will post it on our website and I'll make sure that you have it to review.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I also appreciate Josh and the folks at the wastewater reclamation treatment plant, looking into the solar power. Also great to see that the pocket parks are basically done, except it looks like they're still waiting on
They, they did arrive. The scopes are in, so they are officially done. So the two scopes have been placed on the two waterfront parks. And they're complete, so please check them out.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just have a couple, a couple of quick things. First of all, on safe routes to school, I just want to make a comment and tell me if I misinterpret this. So just in this most recent round of back and forth, we've been coordinating with Shaw for four months. It took them four months to specify some set of modifications to the RFP. We received that information on November 8th. They requested additional reformatting and changes. We turned it around on November 9th, one day. So, you know, when we're working with the state, I just want to make the point that our staff is turning stuff around about as quickly as they could. I guess you could have gotten this back by lunch, but I won't, you know, it's probably fine. So frustrating as that is, I just want to call out our staff doing it as quickly as possible. Note on the walkway along Route 261, the Memorial Parkway. You know, here we summarize the response from the state as not favorable. I prefer to maybe look at it a little bit differently. What they've done is they've given, they've given us control over, over this project because we're not going to be doing it in the state. Whatever we end up doing is not going to be in the state. We are going to move forward with trying to figure out what those options are. So in some ways, especially given my previous comment, that's actually a positive. I believe the crosswalk near the firehouse is now done. Am I right about that? Yeah, that's good. Emergency calls, moving on to Jay's report. You only had three emergency calls, but I just, it's the time of year where I always know winter is coming. So for those of you who live in houses where you know you need to keep an eye on your pipes, now's the time to make sure you when that, and if you leave home, open your kitchen counters, cabinets and so on. Sorry. The Parks and Playgrounds Infrastructure Grant, we're going to start working on that. But this report did not make mention of the pending drainpipe, which I know now is going to happen. I would assume that the drainpipe has to happen before that.
That's correct.
The last comment I'll make is the Holiday Lights Tour is a blast. And I will probably do this in December, at the December meeting. But I thank you in advance to all of the folks in Chesapeake Village for the luminaria that they will put out. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Town Treasurer's Report. We've read Brittany's report. I'll send it to Councilman Partik for questions.
All right, thank you. On, on page two of the report, could you just go over that to help explain exactly what's going on with that? I can totally understand.
Yep. So it had been mentioned before about, it'd been tossed around about the 3.1 million that the water park owes to the general fund and how that would be allocated and distributed. So I just want to put this in there to kind of clarify that it's not actually funds that have to be transferred over between a fund to another fund. These are just inter-fund receivables and payables that we record on our government-wide financial statements. So in a perfect world, if there is equity in a fund, then we liquidate a fund, the general fund gets repaid. Now, the collectibility of these receivables is dependent totally on the fund and the profitability and the fund balance and the, just the future of the fund. So I just wanted to put this in there so that when there's talks of what the general fund unrestricted net position is or what a receivable is, it's kind of just all out there. You know, if the general fund has $10 million per se in unassigned fund balance, seven of that is due to the general fund from our own funds. So the collectibility of that is to be determined. Hopefully that answers your question.
That, that was very helpful. Thank you. So that's the only question I had. Appreciate it.
No questions for me. Thank you.
This is really helpful. Thank you. I mean, your explanation is really good. So if I was looking at our budgets that we receive and will receive this spring, when we talk about these potential internal transfers, what line item or where would they be within that budget?
I don't think I know what you're saying.
So we get, when we talk about our budgets, you know, you'll give us the estimated budgets and they'll have a bunch of line items on it. And I guess my question is, where are the, or maybe they're not, where are they kind of represented in that, in that budget? The budgets that we get, we get, used to get a water park fund, general fund, utility fund, water reclamation and mitigation at one time. And so this wouldn't be in those budgets, right?
No, these actually are balance sheet accounts. So they're assets or liabilities. They're not revenue and expenses, which is what the budget is. So they're just, the purpose of an inter-fund transfer is that the cash flow ebbs and flows. For example, if we pay payroll for all of our employees through all the funds, it may come from the general fund in terms of the actual cash. So instead of changing cash in and out of every fund every single day, you just create a liability or a receivable. And ideally, each fund will be paying on behalf of one another and eventually at the end of the day would even out. So unless you plan to make a transfer, it's not going to be budgeted.
What is that end of day? When is it reconciled?
Well, it usually isn't. It, that depends on the going concern of the fund. You don't typically close a fund, so it's not an issue. That another way to look at it is depends on the cash flow. If we, for some reason, have a change in cash flow and the general fund is needing a cash flow, we could do a transfer of, or I could do a transfer of the cash from the utility fund to the general fund to alleviate some of that debt that's owed. As of right now, the cash flow is okay, so there's no need to do that. But it could, you could do that.
The, the general fund cash flow is okay?
Yes.
Right. Okay, I'm sure I'll have more questions, but thank you. I mean, that's a really good explanation of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any additional questions. I thank you for doing this as well. I think it gives us information to start thinking about how this is going to shake out when that's very helpful. Thank you. Okay, Town Engineers Report. We've read Wayne's report. I'll go right back to Councilwoman Bodine. Do you have any questions?
No, most of them were answered in the Administrator's Report. Thanks.
It'll, most of mine were answered, Town Administrator's Report. Good report, though, Wayne. Thank you.
No questions for me. Thanks, Wayne. I can't remember who was here or in the Town Administrator's Report. When, when do you expect next steps on the drain on Calum's?
We are waiting for Calvert County to issue the permit. Soon as, soon as that's done, we'll have a permit. But the RFP is pretty close to being, being put out, to be put out here shortly.
And we don't anticipate a problem with that because there had been some back and forth. We think we're, the eyes are dotted now.
We've resolved the issues we have with them. It's just a matter of dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Cool, thank you. Sheriff's Report. Read the Sheriff's Report. I'll tune it to Councilman Partik.
Hi, good evening, everybody. If I could start
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Add what you will.
I was just going to say, if you've noticed, on October 30th, we had a auto theft. We actually had another one since then in November. Good news is both cars recovered, three people arrested. They were all local people. They, they actually are known to one of the victims. So there, there's some of our people here in town. They went up to Anna Rundle County, committed a few other crimes. So I don't think they're going to be a problem for us for a while, though they facing a lot of charges. So that's it.
Thank you for the update. Councilman Partik?
Appreciate it. Just a couple of questions about the overdoses. There was one in North Beach. On Fatal, thank goodness, Chesapeake Beach. Can, can you kind of tell me where the approximate locations were? Should have given you a heads up ahead of time.
Yeah, I can recall, but I can get that to you right after the meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Look it up real fast.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just, that's, sound like a broken record, but thanks, all caps.
Thank you. No questions, good report. Thank you and stay safe.
Thank you, Councilman.
No, probably sounds inappropriate, but I'm rather glad that they were locals, they were caught and dealt with. And that's not, because I was going to ask you about that. And that's not some sort of systematic problem coming in from, you know, wherever, where it's unknown.
Right.
I know it sounds weird, but I'm glad it was closed.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of glad it was a local person because, you know, we just easier to kind of like confine it, if you will.
It's always easier to solve if it's a local person.
I know that sounds terrible. I mean, I'm just, you know, but that's good. Other than that, just stay safe and thank you for everything.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment on the lines of thank you for your service. Well, I was in a conversation over the weekend with some friends in some neighboring counties and the district. And And there is a general reputation, I'm not making this up, this is not coming from me. This is coming from this conversation that I had, that you don't mess with the Calvert County sheriffs. And I tip my hat to that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. We're trying to keep that reputation alive.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thanks.
All right. Report from the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. If we had Larry, anything to add?
Just one quick thing. Work is progressing. I'm working on part of a committee to prepare for our 100th anniversary for the fire department, which will occur in 2026. So I'll keep you all posted on that.
Good.
That's it.
Interesting. If there are any additional questions, you can get them to Larry. The mayor is not here tonight, so there will not be a mayor's report. All right, resolutions and ordinances. I'm going to introduce an ordinance O-23-24, an ordinance of the Town Council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland to amend the language of the zoning code regarding onsite cannabis consumption establishments. And I'll set the public hearing for December 21st, 2023, 6:55 PM. Planning and zoning, we've read the report. If you have questions, we don't have a representative tonight. So if we have questions, you can get them to Holly and she will forward them. Board of Appeals, continuation hearings. Going to defer to Todd if he has any addition he would like to make. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society. Again, we have a report. No additional comments there, so any other questions, get them to Holly. Climate Change Advisory Group. Councilman?
Thank you. The Coastal Residency Steering Committee, part of the Climate Change Advisory Group, which is chaired by Jeff Foltz, met on Thursday, November 2nd. Discussion included comments on the draft coastal residency plan received from the Town's Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on Wednesday, October 5th, 25th, I'm sorry. And is discussed in the Planning and Zoning Commission report that we just asked by. Based on discussion at the November 2nd meeting, Chair Jeff Foltz is updating the draft coastal residency plan. The updated plan will be discussed at the next steering committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 30th at 6:00 PM here in Town Hall. Steering Committee hopes to finalize the draft plan and submit to the Town Council for discussion at the December work session scheduled for Tuesday, December 12th at 6:00 PM. Questions? Oh. Oh, please, sorry.
All right. Just wanted to let folks know that the town was doing a small pilot project with a solar light at the northern access point of Callum's Field. And it's going to be, I guess, solar lighting installation at that point, just that one, see how well that works and perhaps others will be coming. Thanks.
Thank you. And somehow we need to reorganize. We've got to change the acronym, staying with Councilman Durski, Economic Development.
The County Economic Development Advisory Commission met on Wednesday, November 8th. Meeting was held at National Ink and Stitch in Owens. Tim Manley, owner of National Ink and Stitch, conducted a tour of his business. And this is a continuation of what we've been trying to do at these meetings of moving around and conducting them at various businesses across the county, just to get a little more idea of what challenges are facing our local businesses. Before beginning our actual meeting, EDAC had a moment of silence to commemorate the recent passing of Tony Di Stefano, who served as vice chair of the commission. Other agenda items included the nomination of a vice chair to fill Tony's position, several applications to join EDAC and discussion of events and topics scheduled for 2024 across the county. Work continues on updating the county calendar to include various events. The County Economic Development Authority met on Monday, November 13th. Agenda items for this meeting included proposed updates that will be considered by the County Planning Commission detailing changes to zoning in Solomon's Town Center. Other agenda items included discussion of Economic Development Authority financials, Calvert County Industrial Park sign and issues relating to the Petuxa Business Park. Next meeting of the authority will be scheduled for Monday, December 11th. Any questions? None. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Green Team, Councilwoman Bodine?
Yep, a few updates and a few questions. First of all, good news for the next year's fall pathway and paddle pick or paddle and pathway pickup. We're doing it now in cooperation, coordination with the Calvert Natural Resources Division, who apply kayaks and a kayak guide. That'll be September 28th of next year. There are a lot more planning going on, but it's really nice to really start cooperating with Calvert County even more than we currently do with our February educational talk. So that's cool. Our next meeting is a will be, if everything goes as planned, December 7th, 6:30 at the Twin Beaches Library. And so if anything changes with that, I'll let you know. But right now, it's December 7th, 6:30 at the library. Next, I wanted to talk with Jay and thank him about watering at the Pollinator Garden. And it looks like if life is well, goes well, it'll be available in the spring. Would you like to expand upon that at all? The watering problems that we've had and how you're addressing, which is fantastic.
Sure. This this was a Pollinator Garden started a long time ago, really by C-Box, I think. And we started out with rain barrels that Public Works was filling. This was not feasible. Then we moved to an irrigation system that came from the C-Box budget at the time that was isolated from the hose bib. So long story short, we're going to fix it. It's had some issues where the hose works, but the irrigation doesn't or vice versa. We're going to separate those two. So come spring, whether the volunteers are there can grab the hose or the irrigation when they're not.
Yeah, just any source of water.
Yep.
It's, yeah.
Hopefully that will take care of it.
Thank you. And then as a follow-up, this will probably go to Holly. The green team was asking about, you know, how we did the north side of Bayfront Park with the bridge. And the idea was once state highway was done to potentially do the south side. So is that something that we could follow up upon?
Yes.
You know, and what, you know, we can be as active as you want with it. But it's really just a mirror of what occurred on the other side. And so it's a, you know, the bridge may have to remove a few trees or bushes on the south side. And then basically a replication of the native plantings. But if you need more information, just let us know. The planning for the February talk that's going to occur at the Northeast Community Center is well underway. And that'll be on Ospreys. And then finally, I wanted to mention that we've decided on the spring cleanup, which will be in coordination with Arbor Day. And we'll also be doing tree plantings and hopefully potentially have some giveaways during that event also. That'll be our fall, I mean, our spring cleanup and perhaps get the Boy Scouts involved. Any questions on what's going on with the green team?
Thank you. Callum's Revitalization Committee. I don't have any report, but I am very excited now to have this in sight because it's the gateway to. That's very exciting. Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, Councilman Partik.
Thank you. So we held a meeting November 9th. Community Center. Six people in attendance. And we discussed several items. One was an update on the sculpture project. So basically Thomas Sterner, who was the artist that was selected from the from that project, is in the process of putting together his final project proposal to submit to the Maryland State's Arts Council for try to get the implementation grant. Coming down, we will not hear whether, you know, about that grant until March, I believe it is, early March. All indications are that they will get it just because they and also as part of that project, we had four sculpture models that were created by the artists. And they, as part of that, as part of the deal for getting there, they were to give those to the Calvert County Health Department, which they did. Now, the Calvert County Health Department is going to be taking those models and making play around the county. And so they're in the process of getting ready to do that. They have developed their loan contract that they hoping to do is circulate to different four. If folks, folks are, so they're thinking of, you know, places to set those up, maybe schools, libraries, town council buildings, that kind of thing, and then rotate them around as people want them to keep raising awareness. So hopefully we'll be able to put one out here for a while when that begins. So if we have a display case, you know, if the organization has a display case, they're ready to start loaning them out now. If they don't, then they, the health department is looking into purchasing some display cases for those or encouraging the folks who want to use them to actually purchase a display case. So we're having conversations now about whether or not the town might do that. They probably run in the range of 200. So we also had, we talked about, if you've been following the news, there's been numerous opioid overdoses and deaths in high schools and other schools where they get exposed or they don't know that it has fentanyl in it and they overdose and children. And so we started a conversation with Calvert County Public Schools to see what their policy is in terms of go from there. So I think it is available at the nursing station is what I'm hearing. To get more details on that and we're hoping that urge folks to make all the teachers have it or something like that. Quite a bit of time if somebody overdoses and you have to run and find the nurse and the nurses in the station and then so, you know, so more to come on that. And our next meeting will not be until February due to the holidays and travel schedules and that kind of thing. Normally it's on the second Thursday of the month. We're looking at trying to see if there's a better day of the week for folks. We have a couple who can't make it there. If it changes, I will let you know. But that's where we are now. And of course, we are still working on getting a couple outreach projects going. One with Bayside Baptist. We're also looking at perhaps partnering with the Twin Beach Players again to do another in the future. So thank you. That's all I have.
Questions for Keith? I have one, one quick suggestion, if I may. That sculpture project is really pretty neat. And you've got these models, I don't know how big they are, but I might suggest you reach out to Melissa Gray at the, she's in charge of the Twin Beaches Library. And I don't know how the timing will work out, but boy, would it be neat to have those sculptures on display at the new library around the time that it opens. It should be early spring.
Sounds great.
The timing would work out, I think, pretty well, right? Because you're, you're, they're going to sort of be on tour for a year.
Yeah, I think they're going to be ready here within the next month or so to start circulating those.
They'll get a lot of attention there because a lot of people are going to flock to that new library the minute it opens. It's such a beautiful building. So cool. Thank you, Keith. Welcome Bill, Community Advisory Group. Councilwoman Hartman is not with us tonight. There is no report. There is no unfinished business, so we will move to new business. A handful of things to do here. First, the Town Council to consider the appointment of Victor Guido Jr. to the Board of Elections to complete the term of Margaret Hartman, which expires March 3rd, 2024. This term is to commence immediately and to initiate the four-year term for Victor Guido Jr. on the Board of Elections that will commence on March 4th, 2024. So just to clarify, it's finishing the vacated term and then appointing Mr. Guido for the subsequent term commencing on March 20, March 4th, 2024.
Move to approve.
A second. Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
All right, second item, the Town Council to consider the reappointment of Randall Getman and Dominic Soroka to the Board of Elections for four-year terms to commence on March 4th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item, Town Council to consider authorizing the town administrator to expend funds not to exceed $100,000 for the emergency repair of a leak at the Chesapeake Beach Water Reclamation Treatment Plant from the Water Treatment Plant Fiscal Year 24 Budget Repairs and Maintenance Line Item. A budget amendment to account for this emergency expenditure is forthcoming. Before we start the process, will Holly add clarification?
So basically, what we have is a request for an emergency expenditure to address a leak at the treatment plant. Treatment plant staff and public work staff have worked very closely in order to identify the cause of the leak. However, we do need a contractor to replace the line to ensure that the leak is resolved. So what we have before you now is that we will take the money out of the current fiscal year budget. The amendment will be moving it from the capital improvements line item to repairs and maintenance to cover that cost. And there will be a couple of projects. Josh, would you want to just inform the council of what you plan to not do out of the capital line item to, in order to complete this project?
The one line item that we're looking at not going through with is the RASH pump replacement. Right now, that project's kind of dragging out, does not look like we'll be able to have it completed to a final invoice by this fiscal year. We will postpone that project till next fiscal year. There has been no expenditures on that project for that work at this time. Right now, we're just doing work up on it. That should be sufficient funding to be able to cover the repairs that we need to have done.
I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last item of new business. Your discussion? Last item, Town Council to authorize the mayor to expend $365,000 using monies in the general fund that were made available by ARPA funding. You're welcome. Plus closing, closing costs for the purchase of the property at 3915 26th Street per resolution R-23-3. And again, I'll let Holly offer some clarification.
We have on the screen the parcels of land that are being purchased by Town Council. So they are adjoining the Town Hall lot. So we have four parcels that are significant, they're higher and drier should in the future the town ever need to use the land for governmental operations. And so these are the the four parcels, again, directly adjoining town property.
Oh, move to approve with discussion?
Move to approve. Do I have a second? Discussion? Do you want to start?
Yeah, sure. I'm certainly in support of this. I just had some comments, town property purchasing. All of us feel that this is a good purchase for the town that would allow for some future expansion. But it is great as a big patch of open green space right now as well. Personally, I think we should bulldoze the dwelling immediately and then fill it in as open green space as soon as possible. There's LOL after that comment there. Though we know, though we know we're, we're doing this with the best of intent, with a strong sense of posterity and investment in the future. Previous town administrations have been frivolous with some of the property that they've had. One thing that we've realized from the last comprehensive plan process is that it is is that it is, one thing that we've realized is our yearning for small town open space. That's something that, that struck me that's come out of that process. And I can't help but mention this, you know, one of the Three Fishing Creek condominium-type properties, before the appeals board right now, it's previously owned by the town. I don't understand why past administration, those actions and why we would have got rid of that property that was adjoining Fishing Creek. The comprehensive plan that came out, we're scrambling for green open space. Kind of apples to oranges a little bit because we've got different administrations. If there was anybody, maybe Councilwoman, maybe that predated you, I just don't get that, but I don't want to harp on that. It's a custodian question. I know that this, this council here, you know, we've got the best intentions. It's an investment in the future. And hopefully, future town councils will respect that property and, you know, they'll do something with that eventually, as opposed to getting rid of it for a song and it becoming a condominium. So I'm in support of this, thank you.
There are other comments? Councilman?
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of what Councilman Morris just said. And I'm always supportive of the opportunity to get property in such, for the town of Chesapeake Beach in such a confined area as our town. And so this is an opportunity that presented itself. And I echo the need for, and it came out clearly in the comprehensive plan, as Greg just said, the need for green space. I understand the need and desire maybe to eventually expand town hall administration areas. But until that time, this is an opportunity to have a piece of property that adjoins the town center area and even expanding out towards the parking lot and towards Callum's. I mean, it's, it's an opportunity and I'm glad we took it when it arise, when it arose. And we should consider, as we do our budgeting, again, looking at long-term planning, if this is a desire of this administration, potentially future administrations, would not be a bad idea to set monies aside, much like we do with the Rainy Day Fund or the Dredge Fund with a specific line item for land purchases in the event that opportunities arise. And so as moving to the budgeting cycle, I'd encourage us to consider that. A land purchase line item for future purchases, because one never knows when that opportunity will arise again.
Thank you, and I'm going to offer, I'll do it quickly, but I'm going to offer some comments as well. This is a huge opportunity for the town. I'm echoing really what my fellow councilmen, councilmen and women said. And I, I would love to see this as green space, some kind of an entrance into Callum's. I understand the need for extra staff space, but we're getting four parcels here for, for a song. And I think there's room to do both. Certainly in the immediate term, some green space that could be welcoming to pedestrians. I think it's a great opportunity, so I'll, I'll stop there, I'm only echoing what others have said. We have a motion on the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Have it? Public comment. Hearing none, council lightning round, I will start with Councilwoman Bodine.
Yeah, just a few quick things. First of all, tomorrow's the deadline, I encourage everybody to vote on the calendar photos. You can go to the town website and please vote for your favorite photos to be on next year's calendar. Your voice matters. I'm really happy that the administration has made this a thing to do. It used to just be a small committee that chose the photos that wound up on the calendar. And I think this is a, a much better approach and I love it. Next, I'd like to encourage you to enjoy Light Up the Town, wonderful event. And I believe that our acting mayor set up some ice skating, which he may wish to talk about. So that's a wonderful thing, and I'll close with, have a very, very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
I'll echo my colleague on looking forward to seeing everyone at the Town's Light Up the Town Festival on Sunday, November 26th. And also the North Beach Holiday Parade and Holiday Market on Friday, December 1st. And don't forget to watch the parade on Thanksgiving and see Santa come in. Thank you.
Officer Morris?
Yeah, it's, certainly, we're entering this period of giving thanks. I'm thankful for the town of Chesapeake Beach, I'm thankful for the Twin Beach area, I'm thankful for Calvert County in Southern Maryland. I wish everybody the warmest small-town Thanksgiving. All right, thank you. So, yeah, just want to wish everyone safe travels over the holidays. Driving or flying, out there on the road. And also, it's just amazing that the holiday is already here. It doesn't feel like it to me, I've just been so busy, but I saw, I was working from home today. I looked out of my kitchen window and there's Bruce Wall.
Oh, yeah.
Preparing his display. And he reached out to me and said, hey, are you going to participate this year? Because he does kind of a community light display with music. Really, it's really, actually really nice. And so, so, yeah, I said, yes, of course. So hopefully, I'll get a chance to come and see that in a couple of weeks.
A couple of things, I, I was bummed that Grace Mary left. I need to know what movie, you know, Clint Eastwood stared down a rockfish and say, do you feel lucky? I don't know. One very nice announcement, the, the town has applied for the Tree City designation. This is work done with help from Sue Alexander and Melanie Crowder. They're going to pull dates for the first Tree Board meeting. So that's exciting and, you know, continuing, you know, just give thanks for the small town, but just continuing these small-town kind of, kind of projects. Light Up the Town, so the lights are up, that's always half the fun to me, is when the lights go up and then now you can't see them, but I know they're still there. It's like opening the refrigerator door, right? And can't wait for Light Up the Town. We do have an ice skating rink. It's an experiment, we're kind of enthusiastic about it, could be something that we try to do. I, I, I don't know what, whether it's a regular thing, I don't know what kind of response we'll have, but please put that on your calendars and come out. The, the ice skating rink will be starting at 1:00 PM on Sunday after Thanksgiving. And then Light Up the Town officially starts at 4:00, do I have that right? It starts at 3:00. The Light Up the Town event, there'll be some vendors out, there'll be a bonfire, it's a neat, it's a neat event. And then lastly, I'll say, keep your eye out for the Light Up, Light Tour. And that'll coincide, I'm, I'm sure, with Chesapeake Village Luminaria, so. Happy Thanksgiving all, thank you. Do I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I've been dying to do this. Meeting adjourned.